Regular meeting for Thursday, April 18th, 2019. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Planning Board members present, we have our alternate, we have Noah Cobb, we have regular member Sean Winston, we have the Vice Chair, Niall Shore, we have Paul Bover, and we have Nicole Fecto. Absent tonight is the alternate Mike LaRue. We also have our Town Planner here, we have our Code Enforcement Officer, the Town Manager, we have the Chair of the Selectment Committee, and last but not least, we have James Bolissimo, the Planning Technician and Webmaster and Facebook Administrator for the Town of Berwick. Public comment session is open to any resident or property owner in the Town of Berwick to come forward and talk about anything relating to the Planning Board. Feel free to come forward and just state your name and your address for the record. Public comment session is open. We'll also have another public, excuse me, another public comment session at the end of the meeting, so if you'd like to, if anything comes up during the meeting, you can come up at the end of the meeting. Anybody for public comment session? Seeing nobody come forward, we close the public comment session, moving on to the approval of minutes for the April 4th, 2019 meeting. What do you have, Mr. Bover?
Nothing. I had something and it got away from me.
James gets an A+?
So, I'd give him, I'd give him an A.
They're looking a little light. I feel like we said, we said a lot more than what is...
He'll find it and he'll have revision at the next meeting.
I'd like to see four or five.
Yeah, they're looking light.
All right, anybody, anybody else? All right, so the motion will be for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's 5-0. Next on the agenda, moving down to old business, the Medical Marijuana Production Facility, 398 School Street. It's the R3 Zone with frontage on Route 9. Applicant is David Springer, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee J.
Oh, well, thank you. Good evening. So I have no memo for you this evening, but I will indicate that as we left the last meeting, there was a need for some additional stormwater analysis to be done. The applicant has provided that. I received the study on Tuesday. Unfortunately, Tuesday I was working all day in another town, and Wednesday was all day in another town. So I have done some preliminary research, and I do have a call into the engineer that did the stormwater analysis. I've talked with the applicant a little bit. My biggest concern right now is that you could find the application complete so that you can have your site walk because they have done the stormwater study. The biggest issue though for me is that they're not showing any detention or retention at this time on the site. And the way our ordinances read, they say that if you're going to impact an acre or less, and I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt that we're doing that at this point, that the system must detain, retain, well, it sends you to Chapter 500, which is main DEP standard. And in that standard, it says the system must detain, retain, or result in the infiltration of stormwater from 24-hour storms of the two-year, 10-year, and 25-year frequencies such that the peak flow of stormwater from the project site do not exceed the peak flow stormwater prior to undertaking the project. And I did have a chance to look at the tables in the analysis, and peak flows do exceed that. So I need to talk with the engineer and make sure that I'm on the same page with him, and if need be, have some small ponds. I say ponds because he's broken into several smaller watersheds designed into the site. But that should not preclude you from doing your site walk, and my conversation with the engineer should occur in the next day.
Okay. Do you want to come up?
Yeah. My name's Dave Sprang. To find out what we're up to, we are doing a site walk, right? We're talking a couple of weeks now. Is that what we're doing now?
We haven't scheduled it yet. We have to schedule, we also have to approve the application complete.
Okay, so as far as the stormwater going, I guess we stand at that, you know? You've received that, now you need to, you know, tell me what direction we're going in from here.
Okay.
Basically, I think the next scheduled is the site walk, I believe, right?
And a public hearing.
Yes, so again, as you recall, the stormwater piece was the last piece we needed. And I always like to break things into two discussion points. One is, did he submit the stormwater analysis? Yes, he has. Then the issue becomes, is it adequate, or do we need to have additional things looked at or done? That's a discussion for your deliberation after it's found complete.
Correct, yep.
So the only piece that was missing is the stormwater, and I would say that if you choose to, you could find the application complete, and there'll still be a little bit of debate later on as to the adequacy of the information.
Sure. All right, does the Board have any questions for the applicant? Paul, you look like you...
Not at this point.
No?
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I'm not reading, I'm not reading your body language that well tonight.
Oak me.
If that glass of wine is thrown off his body language.
Okay, so the last time that we met, a few weeks ago, or it was last month, we said that this was going to be the one thing that we needed to find it application complete. So do we have any other questions or anything we'd like to move forward?
Seems complete to me now.
Okay, so the motion would be for considering the application complete.
I move that we consider the application for the conditional use at 398 School Street, complete.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's 5-0. Let's look down here for a site walk. And we don't have to do it very early now because we've got good daylight. Our first meeting is going to be, our next meeting is going to be May 2nd, Thursday, May 2nd. How does 5:30 on Tuesday, May 2nd sound?
Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, May 2nd.
5:30.
Does that work?
Yep.
And Sean, if you can be there, if you could be there?
Yeah, I should be able to make it by 5:30.
Okay. Does that work for you guys?
Yep.
James?
Yep.
All right, see you over there.
Okay, thank you.
Can you do the public hearing too?
Yeah.
Oh, so I'm sorry, thank you, James. We're also scheduled a public hea...
You don't, well... You don't have to be here for...
Well, you have to be here for it.
You don't have to be right here for this.
And we are still talking about your application, so you should be here. So yes, can you please schedule the public hearing for that date as well? And then we'll hear back from the Town Planner in the next few days, so. All right, now we're all done. Thanks for the reminder, James.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, if the Board doesn't mind, I'd just kind of like to move out of order here on new business just to get our Town Manager into bed in a good amount of time tonight.
Aww.
He's tired. Yeah.
Say that about me.
We try, Lee J, we try.
I would suggest, and I'm assuming that our Town Manager doesn't think that he should be able to jump to the front of the line, that everybody else here's worked today, and I don't want to embarrass him by saying he's not as tough as everybody else in town.
All right, in that case then, Mr. Vice Chair, we will go and we'll just continue along here then. Major subdivision, sketch plan, Old Sanford Road map, R41 Lot 16. This is in the aquifer protection zone, and the applicant is Curtis. And I will turn it over to the Town Planner.
Yes, so I have done a memo for you. I believe you have it. That's the wrong application. So I had the parking lot all out and ready to go. We're going to move it up. Yes, so I do have the memo for you. I have provided a copy, at least for reading purposes, to the applicant this evening. But the applicant is proposing to subdivide 33.32 acres into four lots consisting of one lot of 23-plus acres, three smaller lots of 2.75 acres, and a private drive of approximately 1,010 feet in length, providing adequate frontage to lots three and four shown on the plan. This is a four-lot subdivision, and as such would be classified as a minor subdivision as defined in the ordinance, which may only need one meeting of approval once you find the application complete. The property has a stream resource running through it, with significant amount of identified wetlands and a 75-foot setback off the resource. There is however enough upland in each proposed lot parcel to develop the site. The applicant also has the ability to fill 4,800 feet, square feet of wetland if needed with a permit by rule from the main DEP. This land does abut the Bridgeworks Land Trust property to the rear of the site. The applicant has not yet provided a net residential density and acreage calculation for the property based on the definition found in the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. While I'll paraphrase and say that I'm sure that once that's done, we'll still find there's adequate property available. Under waivers, Article 14.1, subdivision regulations allows for waivers of submission of information. The Board finds that there is no need for the information. Below is a list of the waivers requested by the applicant and why the waivers are requested. Article 11, Section 11.15, Stormwater Management. Impervious area will cover less than 5% of the site. Article 11, Section 11.4, Erosion Control impacts less than 5% of the total area. Main DEP best management practices will be followed. Article 11, Section 11.12, Hydrogeological Assessment. Four rural forested lots are proposed. Homes, wells, and septic systems will be spread out. Staff would not suggest waiving the erosion control requirements either for the construction, either for the construction of the private road or for the construction of individual homes. The site has significant wetlands along with a stream resource running through the middle of the site. Proper standards should be evaluated as part of the plan, plan review to ensure proper protection during construction. A hydrogeologic assessment could be waived however, could be waived however, the plan should show a 100-foot buffer around the proposed septic system locations on the sites in order to be assured the proper separation between wells and septic systems for prospective lot owners to see. Recommendations at this time is that when the Board is ready, excuse me, I would recommend approval of the application. However, I would suggest the plan be revised as follows prior to approval. Plan be revised to show proper erosion control measures for the construction of the road. The plan be revised to add a note, not a note, indicating that each lot shall comply with main DEP best management practices for erosion control, and that the building permit show the erosion control measures proposed prior to the issuance of the building permit. The plan be revised to include a 100-foot buffer around the test pit locations to ensure proper separation between the septic systems and any well location on each site. Plan be revised to show the waivers as approved in a note on the plan, as well as a separate note for any conditions of approval. And the plan be revised to show a net residential acreage and density calculation on the property.
All right, the applicant like to come forward? I'm seeing a lot of you lately.
Yeah.
Got you the big plan date. Oh, you don't have one?
No.
Mike got the only one? Yeah.
Nick Curtis, 206 Old Sanford Road. So yeah, we get the four-lot subdivision with smaller lots, I guess, and one large lot. Proposed road going in. Pretty nice flat land if you go out there. If we, you know, plan a site walk, you guys will be able to see it. You guys looked over at the waivers and stuff. If you have any questions, if you have anything to add?
All right, can we talk about the erosion control?
Yeah.
For the road especially too?
Yeah.
How much work would it be to put that on there? Work that into the plans?
It probably, it wouldn't be much. I can, I can work that into the plan.
Glad you request a waiver then.
I don't know. I just figured he's going to build the road, so he's going to do it the right way.
Okay. Did you have a problem putting that in there?
It's not a problem. Note, we're, my construction company is going to do all the work. I'm certified for erosion control practices.
Okay.
So that's no issue.
All right, great. And then this, one of the notes here that the Town Planner mentioned was just revising the plan just to add this note here. Do you have that each lot shall comply with the main DEP best practice, or best management practices for erosion control?
Yeah, I had it in the application. I just didn't put on the plan.
Okay. And then there's a couple other things too, like the 100-foot buffer around the test pit locations for septics and wells?
Yeah, yeah, and we can add all those. I'm hoping James will forward that over, and I'll add all that stuff to the plan. That should be, those are minor changes.
And then, does it, any questions from the Board?
Are you going to put a detail on for the erosion control, whether you're going to use silt fence or silt saw, or which one you're going to use?
I'm sure you can add that on there. I'd probably plan on using erosion mulch.
Okay.
For most all the areas. If there was an area that needed, you know, erosion mulch along with silt fence, then so would be it. Or any stone checked in, you know, an area with a lot of runoff, then you can do so.
Yeah, there's a lot of wetlands out there, so.
Yeah.
Is the road going to be paved?
No. Not this time anyways.
But it will conform to the standards that we have for greater than three lots. There are standards in the land subdivision ordinance.
Something that we've been talking about recently in the Planning Board, because this is in the R3 zone, is limiting the stubby roads in R3 because for our town plowing purposes, it's just not efficient. We don't have the manpower to plow those, so when you create this road, keep in mind that it might not get adopted by the, by the town, and it might be something that you, you might want to add a maintenance.
We have maintenance agreement.
I would, from a real estate standpoint, I would draw all that up immediately, and especially when you're selling off the lots because it's likely that, or I can't speak for the Selectmen, but it, that's kind of what we're getting to.
It's always going to be a private road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never intended it to be a private road.
And there will be, and I'm sure we've put this on all plans that are like this. There should be a note on the plan that says this road will not be accepted or proposed to be accepted by the Town of Berwick unless it meets the current Town of Berwick standards for a road. So that should be on the plan, just to be clear to anyone that looks at subdivision plan. You know, if this is a private road, it's going to be their responsibility.
Yep.
All right, anybody else have any questions? Do you have any questions for us? What do you want to do next?
You guys.
You want to come back, you want to come back with a full application, and then we'll review the whole thing? Tonight's just a sketch plan, so come back with the full application, get it into James. We'll get you on the schedule, on the agenda, and then we'll take a look at everything and...
Just update the plan, pretty much.
Pretty much, with what we talked about, yeah. Yeah, with what we talked about, and I think...
You can probably pencil you in for the next meeting.
Yep.
If you could get everything in within a week, so.
Yeah, I'll be able to get in next week.
I've got one more quickie. I noticed on the big lot, and it may not make sense to do it because it seems you've got plenty of land area to do it, but you have building envelopes kind of shown on lots two, three, and four, but none in the big lot, because, and I'm sure when we do a site visit, we'll probably see there's a variety of places to put a house, but you're not putting an envelope on there to restrict to any building then.
No, I can add, I can add them on there, but it's just going to be a big area.
And it probably would be a very irregularly shaped, large envelope anyway. Just stay out of the wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that I did for my own purposes while I was looking at it was I took a red marker, since it's on a colored plan, and outlined where that wetland is to see what we had for upland. I mean, there's definitely plenty of upland there.
Yeah.
That way at least you could see where the wetlands were versus the upland.
I noticed lot two has quite a, quite a bit of the wetlands included in the envelope though.
Yeah, it's a big lot, so it's deceiving. When you get out there, you can see there's plenty of place outside of it.
Yeah, I mean, these are like two-acre lots, right?
Because it's aquifer, so it's got to be 120,000.
All right.
Great.
Well, we'll see you in two weeks. Next on the agenda is, in new business, is conditional use application, Medical Marijuana Storefront, 357 Portland Street, map R70, Lot 12-1. This is the RCI zone in the applicant's paper, Birch Property LLC. Lee J?
Yes, I'm not going to go through the whole piece with you. Jeff is here, and he's done a very good job of explaining the project. But the applicant basically had received approval from you approximately a year ago to develop the site into a grow facility with two fairly significant buildings on it, and has chosen to come back and amend the plan or change the plan to do away with the grow facility operation and only have a medical marijuana storefront for retail, for medical retail sales at this time. His, the memo that I provided you and his submission has quite lengthy explanation as to exactly what they're proposing to do. Under waivers, the applicant is seeking two waivers of the ordinance which are as follows. Article 7, Section 7.5, under landscaping, landscaping shall be preserved in its natural state until fire is practical by minimizing tree removal and grade changes in keeping with the general appearance of the neighborhood developed, neighborhoods developed areas. Landscaping shall be designed to soften screen or enhance the physical design of structures and parking areas to avoid encroachment of the proposed use of the abutting land use. While parking lots shall be landscaped along the property boundaries with shrubbery, trees, and other landscape materials. In Article 7, Section 7.8, Off-Street Parking and Loading states, "Off-street parking and loading spaces for non-residential uses where not enclosed within a building shall be effectively screened from view by continuous landscape areas not less than six feet in height unless waived by the Planning Board for the express, for express reasons along exterior lot lines adjacent to residential properties and all public roads. Except that driveways shall be kept open to provide visibility for entering and leaving. No off-street parking, loading, and loading shall be permitted within the front setback or any setback adjoining a public street except as specifically authorized in the ordinance." The applicant has provided proposed justification that it's in their intention to keep the existing trees in the rear of the property to be used as natural screening. The tree line will be cut back to the southern property line and reduced from the front of the property to provide security through visibility around the building area. Remaining trees will stay outside of the developed area. And then the proposed parking stalls are parallel to Portland Street to direct headlight glare away from the roadway. The stalls are more than 80 feet from the property line and 140 feet from the edge of Portland Street. The intent of this, of this waiver is to provide better visibility for potential security reasons on the property. Staff sees no reasons why not to grant the waivers as requested. The next steps on the application is to decide what you'd like to do with the requested waivers. Since this is an amendment to a previously approved application, the application is complete based on the submission information as well as the previous submission. That is of course based on your decision of the waivers. And then set the date for a public hearing. Based on the outcome of the public hearing, a recommendation will be provided at that time. Any additional conditions or anything else that may come out of this process. The applicant has also provided you with a building detail to show you what the proposed building would be look like.
So I do remember when we approved this application initially, that we did not grant the waivers for landscaping and off-street parking, but in the plans, we were very specific about what had to be in there, and it was specifically brought up by you.
Yeah. Yeah, this is so different, the way, I mean, you're not proposing, but was in the original...
I have a copy of Jeff Aliva's Civil Consultancy. I've got a copy here of what was approved, so we can look at that and then we can come back to this amendment plan.
So the scale changes quite a bit.
It does. My question to this really is like, is this really an amendment if it's a completely different? I mean, there's nothing except for the, except for the word marijuana, that's the same. So how could this be an amendment and not a whole brand-new application for a totally different, brand-new use? Because cultivation and storefront are two different uses for us. So how is this an amendment?
And what difference will it make except for...
I looked at it as an amendment simply because it was previously approved, the approval's still in place from the original approval, and that it's still keeping within the same use category and everything that he wanted before, but he's changing and actually scaling down what was originally proposed and approved on the site.
So my storefront has already been approved on the site or not?
No.
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 Well then, I would agree with Nicole. If, if a storefront has never been approved, how is this an amendment?
It's a totally different building. There was two buildings before, I think, or two...
Two phases.
They both contain the words medical marijuana, but other than that, it's a totally different use.
I mean, I'm sure...
It's a practical matter.
It's almost like the...
As a practical matter, I don't think it matters for the process, but it's not an amendment, yeah.
It's almost like the owner of Subway coming in here and saying, "Well, I want to change my use. It's already approved to be a restaurant, but I want to be a medical marijuana storefront."
Yeah, exactly. Except Subway's there already. There's not, there's still nothing there on this lot.
I guess I look at it a little different, but it's your call, not mine.
I don't think in the grand scheme it probably matters. I just don't like saying that it's an amendment when that doesn't even exist and never was started to be built or...
Is there a cost, and I'll direct that at James, is there a cost to, a cost difference having a modified plan, an amendment versus...
Yeah, they paid the $200 application fee.
I think it's still the same.
I think it is too.
Procedurally, what would the differences be?
There's no difference.
I mean, we're still...
There is no difference.
We may not go on a site visit though.
Right.
Maybe not, but, but in the end, there really is no difference. Because I mean, the application that they submitted is more than complete.
Right, I agree with that. I just didn't like the word amendment.
I apologize. I won't call it an amendment again.
Thank you. Let the note, let the minutes reflect that.
All right, can we just talk about the landscaping and the parking from the old plan?
Yeah, I'll go to the old plan. And here's the old plan that we had. We had, it still came, come in the driveway. And remember, this was also the first approved medical marijuana project in town. And I think there was still a lot of unknowns at the time about what was going on and what was needed for screening and hiding this building. So it really what it looked like is that we had approval for a building that was then rep. This was phase one. Phase two was a building here, and phase three was a building that was wrapped around and screened and forested. The parking on the inside of this, that was screened by a building along the edge, and the intent was to, again, I think for the, again, going back to the unknowns, was to have some additional plantings on the side of the building on here, and some additional plantings on the side over on this side. We could argue that this is the driveway end where the ordinance says that that is to stay open and clear. But that, that was the, these were the... But that was the, these were the areas there where we initially requested the landscaping waiver at the time for these sections on that side. So if we go to the proposed project, again, we're gonna clear for where our building is. All this area back here is all gonna stay, remain trees where before the building was gonna come back like this along the side. This tree line over here is pretty thin as it goes, and we were hoping to get, seek a waiver to open this up so that there would be visibility for looking at the project.
Even after we didn't give a waiver last time? Even after we talked about that for like, seemed like for days last time?
Again...
Why don't you just give it a shot again?
Yeah, I think I give it a shot again. I mean, we look at, we've, I've discussed it via email with the police chief. I'm waiting for his comments back on that, looking at regarding back for security reasons to be able for easier for patrol on that side. We're not proposing to fence in around the property on this project. And again, I'm gonna go back. I think there was a lot of hesitancy back in the first approval. Again, this being the first one that was approved by the town of Burwick. You know, we had a very extensive order control plan that was submitted as part of that approval. You know, the first of that, for that use. And again, I think it came back to being a little bit hesitant on what was going on in there through that first approval process. Again, here, the storefront, we're seeking the waiver to be able to keep that open for, you know, for visibility and for security. Again, our parking is pushed back. It's not adjacent to the property line or near the setback towards the back of the property, where we have tree, existing trees that can surround that. And, you know, and I know we can't look at it, but we look at the rest of the commercial entities along this road, and even recently approved ones don't have landscaping in front to shield parking or to protect the abutting properties.
I agree with that. Look at Trican. It's open all the way around it.
Any questions?
I think, from my recollection from the original project, I think a lot of the landscaping was, because it was a large warehouse-type building, I think that was a lot of the reasoning behind getting some landscaping in there was to break up the, you know, the look of the building, because it was a warehouse. Not necessarily what was happening there, but just because of what it looked like. I don't know, this is a much different-looking building.
It's like a barn.
You know, much smaller scale. I don't have as much of an issue. I mean, if you can, you know, I wouldn't want you to clear-cut anything that's there on the front side, but, I mean, it's probably gonna be thinned out.
Do some cutting to get, you know, get the power underground.
Yeah, and you got a leach field and the retention pond and so forth. So I think, I think a lot of your natural screening that's already there is gonna wind up coming down anyways. I don't know, I don't have a problem requiring additional landscaping brought in.
This building is not gonna be an eyesore whatsoever, at least the conception.
Yeah, with that button. And you're right, Mr. Chairman, you say the intent is to give it that kind of barn look.
Yeah, it's not gonna stand out more than any of the other buildings that are right there.
But I think if we're gonna waive any kind of a buffer, there are, I think, four houses on the Blackberry Hill side of the project, and even with the park in the way it is now, it's still, there's still gonna be shining there. So I would like to go, I can go myself, but I would like to go on a site visit myself to see roughly where the parking's gonna be, which way the lights are going, and I think the houses are far enough away so probably would not, nobody would object to, you know, traffic in and out of there.
I think, I can meet you out there if you want, Paul, to look at that.
I don't know if anyone else...
But you remember the way the grades drop off in the back?
I do, I do.
And then, you know, it drops off to where it goes back into the wetland behind us. And then the houses up on Blackberry Hill Road now come up, are up at a much higher grade.
I could see every house, though, and I remember talking about, you said, "We're gonna have to take a few trees here and there," and like Sean was saying, that the building before was gonna be much larger.
Much, yeah, different style.
And it was gonna be just a slab side, and this is gonna be different. So I just wanna take a look, see again.
Sure.
What, do you have an idea what your hours of operation plan to be?
Yeah, I think we, in our memo there, we have it.
Eight o'clock.
We're looking for approval for seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Seven days a week.
The footage follows the ordinance allowance.
You know how close, you don't show any of the abutting, there's, up in the upper left of the plan, on the west side, there are several houses in that field.
Yeah, those houses, if we...
How far are they from any of the activity?
If you have the package that I submitted, there's a copy of the tax map. And we can look at where those buildings are as that, or if I can approach you.
You show one house in a picture.
Yeah, this picture really does, it shows a house that's way farther back. That is on, actually, map nine-four. The house on nine-one and nine-two are abut Blackberry Hill Road. You know, they're set back, but they're oriented following that.
I'm getting ready to list nine-two, actually. I said I'm listing nine-two on Monday for sale, so I'm sure buyers might wanna know about that.
So if we look at that, you know, lot 12 is vacant. Next door, you see the work going on in 13, which is further north along Route 4. And 14 is already developed. But if we see where the houses are, they are, you know...
But the houses are all...
More than 500 feet, 500 to 750 feet from the edge of our building.
And those houses are set way at the back of their lot.
Not necessarily, not for nine-one and nine-two.
Nine-two is right at the front of the lot.
Nine-four is way back.
Yeah, nine-four is way back next to the railroad tracks, but that's also...
Nine-three is not right.
Nine-three is pretty close to the road.
Nine-two's on the road.
Nine-two's on the road. Nine-one's on the road, too, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the old, nine-one's the old house, right?
No, nine-two's the old house.
Nine-two is?
Yep.
This is Grant's.
Yeah, nine-two is close, right close to the...
It's right on the road.
But if we look at where we're at and how the distance of where we are, and again, a lot of that area in the back of the lot that we're working on, and then the back of some of those other lots in that wetland is all wooded. I think we're far enough away from the protection. I mean, if we look at some of the other abutting properties that have been, that are clear fields, that have commercial on them, along Route 4, don't have any screen.
I agree. I actually remember this because I remember arguing with you about the landscaping, because I was like, just because the word marijuana is, if they were going lettuce in here, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't be requiring all this extra screening, because it's marijuana, but...
I don't think we necessarily did it because of that.
No, no, no. I remember saying that particularly.
You said that.
It was the slab side buildings, I said that.
Yeah, but again, you know, this change, this building's, you know, obviously different.
Yeah.
Different in appearance from that.
But we will have more traffic with this concept than the original.
And we do have a revised and updated DOT driveway permit.
You're still sharing the driveway.
Still share the driveway, just like, yep. And no changes to the driveway at all.
So, because we have done a couple of these since, and we've learned a lot, yay. I know the one that we just approved last week, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, they do, they have a, it's not like, you know, you could walk into the marijuana retail area, but there is a, I wanna call it like a holding cell, like, only one person is going into the store really at a time. How is this going to operate? Is it gonna be different? Or is it like, if 10 cars pull up, there's, you know, a plethora of people inside of this place?
I'm not sure how that goes, but I do know that there is kind of a vestibule area in there on the floor plans, and you can kinda see, we're still, we're still working on those.
Yeah, it was hard to tell what was gonna happen in there.
I'm not, I'm not 100% clear on how the state statutes are for how the access to that area is. But again, the...
I think you can have people, I don't know. I don't think there's a state statute.
Again, the area open to the public is very small. You know, it's 600 square feet. It's not a large area.
Any other questions? Anybody? I'm just curious, any plans to expand beyond this, on this lot?
Not right now, not that I've been told. You see on the plan, I've got a kind of a phase two parking lot there. I guess that's really driven on what traffic is, if it's determined. Right now, we've designed the site to have a couple more spaces, more than what the town ordinance requires for retail. Not knowing what's going on, what's gonna happen, if there's a need for that, then we wanna be able to have that approved for that expansion of that parking, if it's needed.
So we don't have to vote on these waivers this evening. We can vote on them after the public hearing when we're considering the application for approval.
Well, if you're going to find the application complete, then you're going to want to give the applicant some direction on whether or not waive those or not. So, I don't know, it's really up to you.
Part of the justification is for security.
Right.
So, as you said, I would like to hear from the police chief as to his view of all of this.
Then I would not take any further action on the application tonight, table it, wait till you get that information, and deal with those at the next meeting.
How does the board, well, let me ask you this. Let me ask the board the consensus of the board. Does everybody agree with Niles?
I'd like to hear from the police chief. I mean, I'd like to have that in hand.
Just a letter?
A letter.
Because we're gonna have a public hearing, and if we have abutters that wanna know, I wanna know before I'm disclosing to the abutters.
I would agree with you 100%. I mean, the use is changing.
And the abutters are residences, whereas with other ones that we have done, we haven't had residential abutters before, so I don't know what the public hearing's gonna bring.
And we should have a letter from the chief anyway. I know we had one last time, but this is a new application. Nothing's changed with the road going in, or the driveway going in. So we don't need anything from the fire chief.
We got an email comment back from the fire chief, and he said no changes.
Can you get something from the police chief?
Yeah.
Can we get you on for two weeks?
Yep.
The lab probably would have a couple of questions. We did on the others that we've seen. You know, what kind of processes, you know, there's a lab involved here.
Lab and kitchen, yeah.
Yeah, it says on your...
It says lab and kitchen.
It says lab.
I think we talked about it at the time, and we...
It says proposed use. The site will have a new medical marijuana storefront, kitchen, and laboratory.
Yeah, and that, that's my mistake. When we first started talking about the project, the applicants thought about having it, but we removed that from that.
So you removed the kitchen and the laboratory?
The lab or not.
So, period.
Remove it from the application.
So this'll get revised?
It will be revised, yeah.
Would it be possible for us to get by the two weeks from now, just sort of a general description of the flow of people coming in, how many employees will be there, who the people coming in will see? I mean, in the last one, there was sort of a two-step operation. If you could sort of tell us who's gonna be there and what are they gonna be doing?
Was the last one by appointment only, or were they changing away?
No, it had been, and they changed it. And I'm assuming this one is not by appointment. This is a walking...
Not by appointment, correct. Yep.
Good.
Does that sound good? You have any questions for us?
No, not right now.
You have anything for us?
Call of Duty Paperwork Properties. I also talked to Tim, the police chief, regarding the landscaping. And, I mean, I'm a tree hugger kinda dude, so I'm not like somebody that, you know, generally cuts down trees. In this instance, I did speak with him, and you're gonna, he's gonna tell you this anyway. You know, there is a greater security concern with this project than it was with the last one due to, one, it's a cash business, and, well, I mean, basically, it's a cash business. So now we're talking about, you know, we, him and I talked about troubles across the street at the ATM. There's been a couple, you know, there's, well, somebody got, you know, quite a bit of money out of it once, and then somebody was trying to cut it open another night. So we were talking about security, him and I, and he's completely, I mean, you're gonna find out, he completely understands why, you know, you can't have nooks and crannies and places for people to hide or ambushes. This is, you know, a cash business here. And so that's really kind of the reason.
Well, I'm glad that you asked for the waivers. Maybe, you know, two times is a charm.
I remember last time. I totally remember that.
I know, and I'm just like, they're asking for waivers, but I understand, but, I understand, but if you get that letter from the police chief, and we have a public hearing, and if we do get some abutters who come in and say, "I want all this screening, it's gotta be protected a little bit more from sight," then at least we have something to go off of.
Sure.
Could you show on the plan maybe more, I don't wanna be nitty-gritty, but like, more specifically? Because I see the existing tree line shown. Is it, you just wanna cut, the dark color is the, is what's going to stay, and the lighter gray is what's going to go?
No, the lighter gray is what's there now. The dark color is where the cut line's gonna be.
Okay. I mean, would it kill you to throw a couple of trees in there?
Come on, hug a tree for the...
Listen, so we're totally like anti-landscape people, right? What we're talking about is just like places where people can hide. I mean, like, if you had trees that had big trunks and was six feet up until the leaves were, you know, the branches, that's a little bit different than what's there right now. So we're not like, definitely not anti-trees or landscape.
All right, we'll see you in two weeks.
Two weeks.
All right.
So you guys thinking public hearing on the 16th?
It's gonna have to be, right?
Yeah. Possibly. Possibly.
We're non-committal at this point.
Yeah. Don't put the carriage before the horse. Yeah. Is that how they say it? Is that the same?
Yeah, don't put the cart before the horse, or carriage, whatever the chairman says.
Other than, you know, the police chief's letter, are there other items that are missing to make this application complete?
No, I don't see anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is conditional use application for a parking facility at 71 Sullivan Street, map U3, lot 11. This is in the CI zone, and the applicant is the town of Burwick. So I will turn it over to Lee J or James.
Well, I have drafted a memo for you, but if you would like James or someone else from town to do a presentation on what they're proposing, that would be fine with me.
Introduction, sure. Yeah, so...
Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Name is James Bellissimo. I might be representing the envision of Burwick hat, Anton of Burwick hat, as well. So this is an introduction into the, into the project. Kind of on behalf of the town, just trying to give the public an opportunity for a public hearing. I'm here tonight to really get direction. I filled out the application really as much as I possibly could.
It's an exercise for you.
That was your chicken scratch?
I know, your handwriting is horrible.
It's an exercise for you.
Looked like a 12-year-old.
Me trying to write well.
Don't you have a PDF that you can fill in for this? I'm sorry, your boss is here.
I don't have that version of it.
I'm sorry. Oh, they didn't give you that version of Adobe?
That is a paid up.
It's a paid upgrade.
Put it in the budget.
Ah, we're kidding.
Yeah, so first, we're not ready at this point to have a full community center design. So that's why this is really just the phase one of the parking facility. I guess the main thing is adding that screening, the six-foot-high cedar fence, which seemed to be a discussion point.
So essentially, we had a use there. That use is still what the old home used to be there, and now it's been being used as a parking lot, so we have to make that, we have to change that use to a parking lot, parking facility. It's essentially why the town is here.
Yeah, I think we might have had a little bit of a disagreement on the point where, I guess, Margawanda had parking with it, so it's, I guess, yeah, we're just trying to go through this process. So, yeah, so we're here to change the use and...
To just, nothing but a parking lot, because right now it's zoned for...
Boarding house, basically.
Boarding house.
Yes, so the...
So we're changing the use. This is pretty simple.
Parking facility, yep.
That use, by the way, has expired.
What's that?
The boarding house.
Oh, wow. There is no use on there.
There is no use.
Yeah.
Is, the background on this is, the old use for that was a boarding house. When I was younger, it was a nursing home, Margawanda. It turned into the, what was it, the six-step program for a sober home. The town acquired it a year and a half or so ago, and our intention... The town acquired it, uh, a year and a half or so ago, and our intention in acquiring it was to tear it down and use that, 'cause in conjunction with our recreation field there. And we took it down, is, we wanna use it as a parking lot for the rec department, but also as an overflow parking for town events, is we don't wanna restrict it just for the recreational field. Is, um, it's, uh, we have a concept for a community center to go there, maybe in the future, is after some major fundraising, 'cause, uh, as I made the commitment that the town wouldn't do that, and, you know, that would have to be done with a private fundraiser. So we're not looking at paving the parking lot at this time, we wanna keep it gravelled, is we're gonna be putting up fences along the border to screen the, the neighbors, and basically just use it as the parking lot, as I said, for the recreation department, and also for an overflow for the rest of the town.
Wasn't there fencing at least on one side of the old Margawanda?
Well, is, there, there was, is when the six-step program moved in, they had to put up fencing between them and the neighbors to the south side, and, uh, most of that fencing had fallen down already, and the town crew took it down.
And that's where I think, this is one side that you're proposing, you're saying both sides, south and north.
Was that six-foot cedar, was that six-foot cedar stockade fencing that was already up and fallen down?
I don't know if it was cedar or not, but it was six-foot tall fencing. And there, there is a chain link fence between the, the property on the south side, I believe that actually belongs to that property owner, um, and, you know, is truthfully, is mostly what's over on that side is poison ivy.
Natural fencing.
That, that does work.
Well, as long as you're aware of it.
So where's the fence gonna go around this property?
I know, it's hard.
It's, uh, how many feet on each one?
On manager, twelve Wilson Street. The, the plan is to go on both sides of the, south and north, along the line, um, to keep part of the area grass, not, we're not gonna create a whole big parking lot on the property. We have already taken all the granite that was part of the house, and we've put it behind the fence where there's a grassy knoll kinda thing, so with a gate opening so that people can get in, we're gonna try, put some gravel in here and smooth it out, so it will make sense for people. The goal is to open up the entryway more, so people can get in and out at the same spot, um, so that, that's the goal, and create privacy for the people on both sides.
So there's gonna, there's not gonna be a gate on Sullivan Street?
Excuse me?
It's gonna be open, Sullivan Street's gonna be open all the time, so it's just gonna be down, uh, next to the adjoining properties.
Yeah, it's not gonna be on Sullivan Street, no, just the sides.
And have you had this surveyed?
We have not had it surveyed.
Why not?
We have a deed, uh, we don't have any questions about your survey.
The, the, the abutters haven't had any problem with us, you know, doing the demolition or any of that property.
Wait till you put a fence up.
They already know we're putting a fence.
Okay.
And that's the reason we're putting a fence.
That's why we're...
Oh, 'cause of that, yeah, yeah, that's true.
And actually, one of the owners asked if we would take down some of the trees today, and we did.
Oh, nice.
I think it was maybe, hopefully on our property, but we shouldn't be doing it on somebody else's, but they took it down at their request, so, and the plan is to landscape it a bit, maybe put up some signage, just so people know it's for public parking for events.
No overnight parking.
No overnight parking, um, and dress it up so it looks nice.
So the, the easement, uh, coming from the Goodrich property across Sullivan Street that shoots right into this site?
Kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah, it's not, you have to go up a little bit, but it's, it's pretty close.
So the gravel itself will be, the whole thing will be gravel, and you're not gonna outline like a walking path that may connect, though, Estebrook through the easement, it'll all just be open.
Is there, James?
Not defined.
You know, with flowers on the edges.
Green prime concept, trail concept?
Yeah, just, because, I mean, one of the goals here was always to connect, you know, the ball field with Estebrook to prime, to the downtown, to the river.
It's not gonna have a path there. Uh, once the fire station goes up, and you'll be seeing those plans next week, or your next meeting, uh, that's going to be an access road in and out for emergency vehicles only, so that's disappearing.
What's disappearing?
The path?
The pathway.
But you'll still be able to walk along that...
Oh, you could walk along the path.
Okay.
It's just gonna be much wider.
You just can't drive.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be just for emergency vehicles, police and fire.
But you could walk on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty swampy back there, and there's this brook that goes through.
It's actually not as bad as you think.
All right, well, we shouldn't talk about that in two weeks.
We'll talk about that in two weeks.
We've already been for the DEP on that.
All right, yeah, we should talk about that in two weeks.
We'll be back here in two weeks for that.
I would, um...
Niles has, Niles has been over here patiently with the questions, so, he's being very, he's being very accommodating to everybody tonight.
Heaven forbid I should be too nitpicky, 'cause I would be wrong, but your sketch plan says estimated borders, survey necessary, so we should ignore the language, survey necessary, is that what you're saying?
We hadn't planned on doing a survey.
'Cause this is, the sketch plan reads estimated borders dash survey necessary, that's a mistake?
Well, that's from, that's from, that's from Lasso Architects, I mean, that's, that's from their plan.
Well, but it's, that's what we, that's what we have in front of us, so I'm just trying to figure out whether I should ignore those words, or, or, if not, what do they mean?
Well, it means that going by the deed, it's just not, it's not surveyed, but like, I mean, you can go by it...
So you're, you're still saying the survey is not necessary?
Yes.
I mean, it's...
So it probably would be good to take those words off of the sketch?
Sure, I mean, that's, yeah, that plan came as a conceptual, that's just to show the...
Not, not a problem, I just like consistency, you know how it is.
So this is a conceptual plan for a potential community center, someday?
It also says draft on it, so...
Someday, off in the future.
Nope, it says no, not full.
Is this fairly level now? I know, I know when that, the building came down, there was like, it was sort of a hump there.
We, we, we took care of that last year, 'cause they, they leveled that out as well, and, and as Steve said, is we're hoping to get some gravel in there and good, put a good base in there, you know, and keep it gravel, you know, similar to the parking lot on the other side of the recreational.
Yeah.
Are the, are the, not to beat a dead horse, but are the, um, markers for the property out there, like have you found the corner points? The pins are...
I've seen pins there.
Okay.
I know there's a pin out on the sidewalk area, for, you know, on one side, and I think out on the backside also by the ball field.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure when you put up a fence, the abutters will be out there making sure that you're not encroached on their property.
I did, I just put up a, we just did a fence last year and paid a thousand dollars to have border surveys done, and we actually owned twelve feet more than what the tax card looked like, than what the tax map looked like, so it might be who view to do a survey?
Remember the kayak launch area, that was adjusted.
Right, and we, and we, yeah, the kayak launch area, we had that surveyed, the town had that surveyed also before we did that, and that was, that was less than what we thought we owned, just, I don't know, I'm uncomfortable doing anything without a survey, but I'm not in charge.
Is this gonna run from like, from, basically from Sullivan Street down to the chain link fence at the ball field?
Uh, most of it, that's what we...
You know, right up to the, up to the chain link fence, really?
Yeah, is it gonna...
On the right-hand side facing the ball field, there was, that was a circular driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we really wanna eliminate that, because people have been using it as an entryway, um, and that needs to go away, because that's private property.
And we've been working with that owner over the last year, you know, to, to take care of that, she, she had problems with people driving over the lawn, and that's why we put up temporary barriers, you know, so, is, uh, she hasn't had any problem with us using it as a lawn.
It might look kinda ugly, having a six-foot stockade fence that ends right at Sullivan Street on both sides, just from a, I mean, we...
Well, it won't have to go all the way to the street.
Well, no, you're not gonna be able to, 'cause you're gonna cut down your sightline from people pulling out, so...
So I guess I'd like to, I'd like to see exactly where it ends.
You're gonna have to stop it short of the street, so...
Maybe at a sidewalk. Yeah.
Because it's a lot of traffic flowing through.
Yeah.
And we're gonna try to have an orderly parking arrangement.
Terry's gonna yell at you for not talking into the mic. I'm not yelling.
All right, this is, I mean, we could talk about the fence a lot more, but, um, basically, I mean, this is just pretty cut and dry, this is just changing the use, or making a use, 'cause there is no use of that lot right now, this is just making it a parking facility, so, does everybody agree that James's application is complete? That's what we'll be voting on here, um, and then if we wanna move forward, we can schedule a public hearing.
I will move that we find the application complete.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion, all in favor? Okay, that's five-nothing, and then why don't we do, can we do a public hearing on May second? Sound good for May second, James?
Yep.
Can we get this re-typed?
Seriously? And a copy of the deed, which actually should be found with the application?
I'm gonna get a sharpie, so it's a little darker.
I know. All right, so May second, we'll do a public hearing then. Next on the agenda is any informational items from the board that they'd like to share? Paul? 'Cause you always have something exciting going on.
I know, I usually do, and I, I'm lacking something this evening.
Oh, come up with something?
No, it's seven thirty.
All right. Niles, do you have anything?
No, but I would just request, in our never-ending attempt to be consistent between definitions and the table, there seems to be some confusion as to whether the right, whether it's properly called a parking lot or a parking facility, so could we just decide one and...
Decide?
I like a parking lot, 'cause I think of a facility like a garage.
Facility is like a garage, yeah. It's a structure. Parking lot is a ground level...
As long as it says the same in both, I'm a happy man.
Tom, I think we should put a parking garage there, two-tier parking garage.
You may someday.